And for pledge of allegiance.
Last would you be, please?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, what do you see in the public and non-public minutes? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to seal the non, oh, sorry.
Well, go ahead through that.
No, I thought you said seal.
No, see, did you see?
See, go ahead, continue as you wish.
Did you see the public and non-public minutes from January 2nd? Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Les and second by Carol to approve the public and non-public minutes of January 2nd, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, facets four zero zero. Consent agenda. You got that, Scott?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda for January 30th, 2025. Two accounts payable, payment manifested, one nine twenty-five. Accounts payable, payment manifested, one seventeen twenty-five. Accounts payable, payment manifested, one twenty-two twenty-five. Accounts payable, payment manifested, one twenty-nine twenty-five. Accounts payable, payment manifest, special batch dated, one twenty-four twenty-five. Payroll payment manifested dated, one sixteen twenty-five. Payroll payment manifested dated, one thirty twenty-five. Village kitchen beverage and wine liquor letter. Administrative abatement for map lot number one zero three dash zero one zero in the amount of one thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Five-year review and approval of veterans credit for map lot number two one nine dash zero one eight in the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars. Updated veterans credit for map lot number two two one dash zero zero three in the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars. All veterans credit for map lot number one zero nine dash zero four zero in the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second?
Any discussion on any of the items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero. I started, pass that on. Uh, next up the agenda, updated job description.
I'll make a motion to approve, to seal the non-public meeting minutes from today, January 30th, 2025. Because it is determined that divulgence of this information likely would affect, adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Second.
All right, motion by Scott. Second by Carol, to seal the non-public minutes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero. Okay, now on to updated job descriptions. Seasonal building and grounds labor slash operator.
So, this is a change, this is the Kelly Park position, apartheid seasonal position. If you look at the word document, HG forty-three eleven, under number four. That one shows you the edits to it. What we've done is updated it to seasonal building and grounds labor slash operator. It would be, the, like, the the discussion we've previously had is that this would now be, fall under the highway department. It would be seasonal, twenty hours a week during the summer. Month, I think it's May through September or May through August, something like that. And then it would be on call for snow plowing in the winter. We've updated the job description to reflect that, seasonal and on-call. We didn't change the pay grade. We did change, because we wanted to streamline that the supervision is the highway department. And then we've added the coverage of town events. We've added on-call for snowstorms and operation of plow equipment and sander, and then just cleaned it up in general. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would, I don't have a question, but I think that we've discussed this and this will be a it won't, it won't cost the town anything, it will certainly give us better coverage on snow plowing and, and better coverage in the summer.
Well, it won't cost the town anything different than it will take.
What's budgeting on?
At the point, that's a good point.
It will still cost everything.
Change the budget.
And it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't increase any kind of, it doesn't put a full-time person in. It just keeps it a seasonal on-call position, so it's a part-time position, seasonal and on-call.
Yeah, just streamlines.
Two of us are slack and you're done?
I just passed it on.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
I'm sorry.
Again.
Yeah, it keeps chain of command and see, streamlines it a little bit better. Is there a motion to approve?
So who?
What was the number?
I have no number.
There's no number, it says the job description.
Job, yeah, job description for seasonal building and grounds labor slash operator. So, motion by Les and seconded by Carol. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero. Welfare officer, job description.
If you open the Word document, it shows you the edits to it. With the change, in the past, this has been a department head position. And the director implies department head, in my opinion. So, it is not, it's a department of one, so we kind of decided that when we made the changes and shifted this into the executive department, it's not a department head position anymore, so we've changed it to welfare officer. And then updated that it's currently shared with the human resources, it was previously shared with the fire department. And then, that's pretty much it right now that, that we've changed. We didn't change anything else right yet, but we wanted to change the title. I don't know if you have any concerns with the title change, or, or if you want anything else.
Yeah, the scope and everything else stays the same.
Yes, and so there, just to keep you in the loop too, at the training. Training is beginning in February. We hold off on training because this new person had a lot to get under her, her plate in the first month of January, and I was away for part of it. Definitely has had to hit the ground running, so. So we are beginning the welfare training in February, and the plan is to turn welfare over by the end of February completely to her, so. Carol?
All right, is there a motion to accept the updated job description for welfare officer?
Make a motion to accept the updated job description for the welfare officer.
Officer. Second.
We're just all out of it tonight.
And I thought it was just me.
Motion by Carol, seconded by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero. All right. Is Rob gonna be here?
He's gonna be a little later, and if we could hold up on the
Warren articles.
Warren articles, I don't think he'll care on the revenues, but I just texted with him, and if we could hold Warren articles until he gets here, that would be better.
I was planning on skipping that for him. Looks better when everybody is in attendance for that.
Let me pull up the revenues.
All right, proposed 2025 revenues.
I showed these to the budget committee on Tuesday night. I, it says draft on it, but if the board is comfortable and is good with them, I would if you could vote to approve them tonight, then I can get these posted. But, I don't really want to go line by line, I can point out a couple things to you.
There's a couple things that you said that
Before, right.
We're gonna be losing.
Yes. So, one of the things I changed since you've seen this last is motor vehicle permit fees, which is thirty-two twenty. I did, it was seven, we budgeted seven fifty, but you, and you can't see, this is the O three one. So, in the past two years, we've gotten over eight hundred thousand. So I felt comfortable increasing that to eight hundred thousand. Then the other thing that we changed is thirty-two thirty building permits. Even though, if you look, we only budgeted ten thousand five hundred, and we got thirty-three thousand in fees. Because of the change at the planning board level that's being proposed, zoning amendments, we're not sure how that's gonna affect things. So, we did increase it a little, but we didn't want to increase it any higher until we see how that affects things if that zoning amendment passes.
If the zoning amendment passes, you're gonna get a lot less in that line. There'll be a lot less people needing it.
Twelve thou, I think twelve thousand will still be good. But, because look, we ended the year at thirty-three, Carol.
Yeah, it's over three times, it's over three times what we estimate.
Yeah, so.
And I think it's traditionally been quite a bit more.
Yeah, so.
And underestimating on revenues is fine.
Yeah.
And, and this is, this goes in, this, we adjust this again, so we, we actually put it closer in September. We have to put better numbers, and then we adjust it one more time at the tax rate setting. So, so it would get adjusted again. This is just get, what we put into our documents for the town report, too. The other big change, which actually, the other thing I haven't changed, and I'm wondering if I should now. Let's, first one is thirty-two ninety-four twenty-five. And that will depend on your Warren article discussion, because that would be income from aluminum. If we're gonna put this right into the, the if we're gonna put all of the aluminum revenues right into the revolving fund if that passes, then we shouldn't claim it here to offset our taxes.
Hold on, I'm still looking for thirty-two ninety-four.
Oh, thirty-two ninety.
Oh, ninety.
Yep, four twenty-five.
Oh, thank you. No wonder I couldn't.
Trying to think how that works.
So, is this, this, these revenues, when we finalize revenues at tax time, those are used to offset our taxes. So we could adjust it then and just leave this here for now, and then adjust it off if the Warren article passes.
Right.
Okay, and that's the same thing for cardboard. Rooms in, thirty-three fifty-one rooms and meals, I adjusted up, we got three hundred and eighteen this year, but it varies sometimes, so I adjusted it up to three hundred, it was two ninety.
Yeah, Conqueror's always playing with the rules and formula for that.
Let's see, what's the other? Some of these are just adjusted based on what I know we're gonna get coming forward. The thirty-four oh one, two fifty. Ambulance patients receipts, we did adjust that up, I just have to check on the actual, because I think that may be a little high. I'm not sure that includes the amount that was supposed to be transferred out to the ambulance revolving fund. So that's why we stayed with four fifty, just in case. Sixty thousand of the revenues, the first sixty thousand that comes in goes to the revolving fund every year. I just don't know if it's out of that number yet or not. Ambulance member fees, that's adjusted based on the new contracts. Any other big things? Water and sewer was adjusted, Jeff gave me revenues, and then I'll explain something on the budget. Jeff gave me his revenues, those are all updated, and then we made the budget match. So budget and revenues match, and I can show you what we did on that. Sale of municipal property, I did, I bumped it to a hundred thousand, I didn't know, I didn't bump it any further, I just don't I know we're, we plan hopefully to sell the seventy mare Mac Street property, and then we are going to be posting by the beginning of next week, the eighty-five Lake Street property. We just didn't put all of the money in here yet, because I know there's been some discussion about not using it, totally offset the taxes, and I didn't, that's why I didn't put it all in, so.
Well, well.
Sorry.
So can you, can you not call it revenue? What would you call it? If you sell a building and we get money for it, isn't that revenue?
Yeah, just, just because every year, the revenues are always under, we, we traditionally underestimate the revenues anyhow.
So.
We can still get more than that in.
No, I get that, but.
Just throws the numbers off.
We just don't use the whole number to offset taxes.
No, I get that too, but what do you, if you're not calling it revenue, what are you gonna call it? If you sell a building and you get X for it, isn't it all?
No, it's still called.
It's still called revenue.
And it still comes in as revenue. This, this is basically for doing the calculations on the MS seven thirty-seven.
Got it.
See the bottom, if you go to the bottom, Carol?
Yeah.
We projected we were gonna get three point five, three million five hundred four thousand. We ended up with three million six hundred and seventy thousand. I don't believe that we counted all of that, because when we do the ta, towards the tax rate is what I'm telling you, it's still revenue, it's still going to the general fund, but we may not, I don't, can't tell you off the top of my head, but we may not have counted that full three point six, because we hadn't finished the year yet, and we had to give her an estimate on where we thought we were gonna finish the year.
But it will show as revenue somewhere sometime.
It'll, it'll show booked on this as a revenue.
Yeah.
But whether we use it fully for the tax rate at the time will depend on the discussion, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, on the MS seven thirty-seven, this is used to show essentially, you get the budget, you have what your revenues are, and that way you calculate how much you're projecting you need to raise in taxes. So if we underestimate this, it's gonna overestimate what we projected, we need for taxes. However, that's just, like, bud, the budget's a guess. This is a guess, that's numbers a guess. When we set the tax rate, that, then we use real numbers.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Thanks, that does make sense, yes.
So, if you're good with this, I mean, it does show we are going up about almost four hundred thousand, not quite. If you're good with this, and you wanna go on this, then it's up to you tonight. Or if you wanna change something or have a different question I didn't cover.
No, I don't think it.
Be done with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we could technically, we do expect to get a lot more for the eighty-five Lake Street, but.
Yeah. And maybe that's what's bothering me.
What am I gonna put it?
I only put a hundred thousand for sale of town property. I could put more, I could bump it to two hundred if you would like, I mean, that's just.
I think the board, even if we do go over, the board's good about applying the funds to the budget as much as we can, so.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and we do adjust this again, so we would adjust this again when we do the MS four thirty-four, which is September. And we have to do it twice, so we, we adjust it twice, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is just gonna, this is just gonna show up on the, on the seven thirty-seven. Which I seem to be the one that always brings that up at town meeting in a year, so.
So someone.
So my, my comments this year will include the fact that we grossly underestimated this revenue.
Because someone else other than me might have the same quiz.
Do you want me, do you want me to bump it to two hundred thousand? Because you could still vote on these, and I can, and on the number with another hundred thousand. If you feel, feel better about that.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we could probably.
Maybe a little closer.
We could put it at four if we really wanted to, but, you know.
I just don't, well, we could, I just don't want us to over.
Right.
Well, you're selling more than you're saying.
Because then, then it looks like we're trying to artificially say that our taxes aren't gonna go up as much as they are. That's, you know, that's.
I guess people consider it too.
There are unforeseen circumstances, the sale could not happen.
That's true.
And then.
Yeah.
So two, I think two hundred thousand's safe.
Yeah, two hundred, still safe, yeah. Change it to that.
All right.
There again, I mean, these aren't numbers that have to be made, you know? They're, they're, they're estimates.
Estimates.
Exactly.
No, I, I get that, but again, somebody could have the same exact question I do at town meeting. You know, you know.
What are you gonna do, what are you gonna do, pocket the other three hundred thousand that you get?
I wasn't saying that.
Hey, I'm looking at retiring, you know?
Yours are doing me chest pains.
Sorry.
So the new number would be four million one hundred thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Yeah.
If you're good with that.
Thank you very much, yeah.
So, as amended?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-five proposed budget as amended
Of revenues.
At this meeting.
Revenues.
Revenue budget as amended, as amended at this meeting.
Sorry.
All right, motion by Carol, second by Les.
Come on, jump in here.
Any further? Any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero.
You're gonna miss this one, wouldn't you?
Yeah. That's true, these are the two.
That's true, they're gonna be.
Oh, thank God they're gone.
That side of the room is misbehaving, right Christina?
What?
That, that side of the room is misbehaving.
Yes, exactly. All right. We're gonna skip over Warren articles for the time being. Community events coordinator contract review.
So, I don't think this was in your packets, so I apologize that I emailed out. The reason it's coming before you, it's just over the threshold that I can just sign off on. Janice Snyder from Stay Rooted LLC is a member of the community events now. She's been doing a lot of work for free. And a lot of work for free. And we were trying to discuss options to replace Claire. Claire retired last year. We didn't have enough money to replace her before this year. So, this contract, which, which is in your folders, it's in your packets now under number five, but it wasn't emailed out to you, is the same contract with some minor changes to it that Claire used.
What, number five?
Number four.
Number five. Proposed, oh, sorry, number six.
Thank you.
Nope, he's good six, number seven. Can, can I give you a different number now? No, number seven.
There we go.
So sorry. It is, is it a full moon? So, the, I talked to Les about it, and the, the contract is, it's for a twelve-month period. If you agreed, I would ask that you approve, you approve me to sign it back, dating it to start January first, because she's continued to do work in lieu of us getting this accomplished. It would be twelve equal payments, it is slightly over the budget, but Les and I talked about it, and the, it's ten thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars for the year. Budget is ten thousand, but we did talk that we believe that we could take this out of the old, the slight overage out of the community events budget, so.
Or, the budget's not a done, done deal yet?
They're done their work on it, we were public hearing.
Well.
But they can, they can still change.
And the board can also move money.
I'd rather put it in the line properly than say we're gonna get it from somewhere later.
It's, it's in the same budget line, it's Carol, but.
You know what I'm saying, though.
I know, I know what you're saying. But I can't, I, we can ask the budget committee to change it at the public hearing. But the concern would be at the public hearing that they, if they change something, they have to have a second, oh, public hearing, so.
Carol, you could amend it at town meeting.
Oh, yes.
And the board can also.
So that, so that we can discuss a five hundred dollar item for an hour and a half?
The board can move money, and if, so, based on what Carol's input is, we could move the five hundred and eighty-four dollars in, from one line to the other, to cover it after town meetings.
If I had to guess, I'd guess we have at least five hundred and eighty-four left in the revolving events.
So we could pay that money out of theirs, too, so, so we have some options to make sure, but we wanted to be really clear so you knew.
Are you gonna be able to sleep at night if we leave this alone, Carol?
It's fine.
I, I, I don't want your health affected.
He's gonna be in Wyoming.
Yeah.
Tricarding my water truck when you can't get to drill oil.
Les, do you have anything to add, because I know that you've worked with her on the events committee?
Is there, this is pretty much the same contract of the guy with Claire?
Yes, it's slightly changed, I've read through it, I didn't see any concerns, but it, for the, it is the same contract.
She's been doing a great job doing all of the things that Claire was doing.
Okay.
Without any pay, so.
Excellent.
Que, uh, question on these contracts. Should we start logging them like we do the PHs?
So we actually log them by expiration date so that we can make sure we renew them. But we could, we could potentially sign numbers to them.
Wouldn't it be easier?
I file them by expiration, month of expiration, so that I can get, make sure that I, we're we're starting to do it that way, so I, we can make sure we don't lose a contract.
Right.
But, but a number, never know.
The number could be the expiration date.
What?
The number could be the expiration date.
But we could do that, that could be the number. But then you have twelve thirty-one twenty-five for a bunch of them.
No, I do, I do it chronological order, like the date.
Well, dasher one, dasher two.
And then you just put a side note on it, another column in the file, expiration date, and then.
Don't make it, don't make it.
We have, so, so we have an Excel sheet already, so whether we could do that, or we could potentially add a number, but for now.
Never knew you were this much of a micromanager.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You wanna approve me to sign it?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so you know.
And backdate it to January one.
Yes, perfect, he's on it, wow. We're not, he is.
Scott's on it tonight.
Make a motion to approve the agreement to provide services to the Bristol Community Events Committee, Town of Bristol Planning, Organizational Design and Print Services for Committee and Events 2025, between Janice Snyder, Stay Rooted LLC, backdated to January first, twenty twenty-five, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
So, I thought you did, when you.
Well done.
Who was that?
That's Charlie, he's turning the sign around.
Oh, you know the sign is.
We don't want the sign turned around, you're not in charge right now.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize.
I'm here listening to the.
To the wind blowing?
To the executive session.
Sorry. All right, so, motion and seconded, discussion.
So, does it matter that Stay Rooted LLC, which I didn't know what that was, my apologies, is not a business that does event planning? Does it make any difference?
I don't think so, she does a lot of media work, I don't know if she does it for other people as well, but.
It, it probably doesn't make any difference, she can add to her business what she wants to.
Yeah, it's, it's done.
Probably just for tax purposes.
Yeah, she's running through the LLC.
Well, otherwise you have to put her on payroll.
It's a contract with her.
Right.
Well, ten ninety, yeah.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
Any amendments, Carol?
What's that?
Any amendments?
Be careful, we're.
Careful, be careful tonight.
Any more numbers we wanna add, anything?
It's really, really important.
More, are the listings around?
Yes, we.
Yes. All right, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero zero. You did say it's the same.
You didn't know what you're in for.
All right.
He's gonna whip this.
Moving right along. Utility appraisal contract review?
Yes. I did send those out to you already. The thing you wanna probably, you can certainly look at, they're all under number eight. You can certainly look at the three items that are there, there's a contract estimate from George San C C LLC, one from Brian Fogg. Brian, we used to use George San C C years, a few years ago, and we switched. Brian, we used to use George San Suce years, a few years ago, and we switched to Brian Fogg. When we did it, we did a review and a recommendation of town council at the time. We moved about two or three years ago, maybe a little bit longer. Oh, excuse me, but under number eight memo to select board, Joanne provides recommendations for, she feel that the subsidy should continue with Brian Fogg, his fees are still lower. And she broke down the summary of what it includes, so that you can see that in her memo.
Yeah, so I was looking back and forth.
Think we should fund double screens for the select board here.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that yours has a delay in it.
Yes.
One screen of the app.
An extra password.
I just saw this gadget on, on you.
I can share the recommendations.
It's over an iMac laptop, or, yeah, an iMac laptop. There was, it slides over, so you have the screen, the home screen, and then the two panels slide out, so you have three screens.
Nice.
One more guy does that.
That was terrible.
Alright, so.
Do you have any specific questions or concerns? It has been a, a lot less money with Brian Fogg. We've had no issues, and he's been our special professional services over the last year as well in court cases.
Okay, I was gonna say, how's he been doing? Because there's always utility court cases.
Yeah, yes, and previously, we haven't had a choice, we've only had one provider.
Right.
When Brian Fogg worked for George San Suce and broke out on his own and allowed us to have another provider, so we were able to compare the two services, we've had very good services from him.
Yeah.
And the attorney works really well with him as well, so.
I'm trying.
Yes, Carol?
So, I'm trying to catch up. Well, no, yeah, I'm trying to open all five of these and look at all.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, well.
Joanne breaks it down in the memo, if you wanted to look at that, it's O eight memo to select board. It gives you a summary of what the single year contract price would be for one versus the other.
Yeah, I saw it on one screen that way.
And that might be easier. See the, yep.
Apparently, I am trying to catch up.
And the reason we, this is a reval year, so our contract with Brian Fogg only went through the end of two thousand twenty-four, and we really, we wanna make sure that we start him with us, if we're gonna continue with him, and we start him for this year, so.
So, in an attempt to let people who are watching know what the numbers are, is kind of what I was getting at.
Okay, yep.
So, in the summary, it says, fix.
So, I can break it down for you, if you'd like, Carol?
Well, it's, it's, so, it's okay for us to tell people what the numbers are with each person's name on it? We're not allowed to give out individual bid information to the public?
We aren't, we aren't allowed to give out bid information until we open them, then it becomes public knowledge.
Okay, so we're saying Brian Fogg LLC is saying a single year contract for twenty thousand five hundred?
Yep.
And George San Suce's contract is a one-year contract of thirty thousand five hundred with initial of twenty-five hundred for the cell tower.
So, the cell, um, they do, just so you understand also what the utility appraisers do, they also do, they do the cell tower, which technically is not a utility, but it is a unique item, so they do do the appraisal for the cell tower. They do all of the utilities, and they also do telephone, because even though telephone is in a utility as well, they are included because of the pole licensing and things like that, that keep, it keeps us making sure that they're all on the same, so.
So, as I read through this, you got it up on the screen?
Yep.
It appears that Brian Fogg comes in at significantly less money?
Yes.
And, okay, that's what I was trying to get to eventually.
Yeah.
Yes, it's about ten thousand, well, just, oh, it's over ten thousand less than for one year contract.
Okay, and, and he's served as well at this point, so.
Yep.
Yeah, he doesn't bring out the separate cell tower cost?
No.
Okay.
No, he does it all on the same.
Yeah, so.
But the cell tower costs are within his twenty thousand five hundred or within his three hundred dollars an hour?
Yes, no, it's within his twenty thousand five hundred.
Got it, thank you.
In subsequent years, you will see, he reviews each of those things, the cost of the service is hourly, so it would be less than the twenty thousand five hundred. The single year contract is based on the evaluation, so it is twenty thousand five hundred. In subsequent years, we pay, you usually pay him less, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna be like, I have two heads to that, obviously.
No, just waiting for the discussion. There's somebody who wanna make a motion.
I will attempt that. I'll make a motion to approve the appraiser and evaluation consultant contract with Brian D. Fogg LLC and to authorize the town administrator to sign off on it for two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Les, any more discussion?
Moving on.
No amendments?
No amendments.
Alright, all in favor?
Wait, no.
Alright, too late?
Not funny.
Proposed, extensions, passes four zero zero. Yeah, moving right along.
No, I was just, oh, there it is, I'm like, where did I put my phone? And I've got, he said, when he texted it a little bit ago at six, it was gonna be about forty-five minutes, so.
So, he's got five minutes, did you want to start your?
Sure.
TA report a lot?
Yeah, I might as well. So, the first thing, I just wanted filing period for town elections, and the filing period ends tomorrow at five o'clock. So, anybody who's watching, who's interested in running for office, did I, I thought I opened it there, yeah.
Have people signed up for all the others?
The only two that I've gotten reports on have been budget committees select board. So, there, I do know that library, oh, cemetery trustees does have someone signed up.
Oh, good.
We've had a resignation though, and Ray was checking to see if we can add it to the ballot or not, we don't think we can. So, if we can't, I'll get that advertised, and I'll read that later.
No, listening?
The, but we have one, so currently, last I checked, there was only one budget committee member signed up there in three open positions.
Might I comment on that?
Sure.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
So, for the public out there, we always have a lot of people that are concerned about the budget and concerned how the selectmen manage the budget, how the budget committee operates, and concerned about their tax rate, and they're paying too many taxes. But we can never get people to run for the budget committee. So, for those people that are concerned about the budget and your tax rate, step up and put your name in the budget committee would be a really good thing to do. Thank you.
So, the position.
This public announcement has been broken. Sorry.
PSA, Carol's PSAs.
The positions for the public, I also, while we were here, I wanted to just show you what I've done so far. We've created, if you go to the homepage, unfortunately, I created it and then went back to the homepage, so you do have to link through, sorry. But it's pinned to the top, it's twenty-five, twenty-two thousand five elections in town meeting information. You just have to click on the blue once you get there, because I set it up somewhere else first. As we get information, we're adding it here, the filing period. So, you know also, I've taken the filing period and I've added it and programmed it on Facebook to go, I think I had it going every couple days, and it'll go again tomorrow saying, reminding people today's the last day to sign up. And I did add, tried to break up the language, saying, are you interested in participating local government, call us with any questions, that kind of thing. So, we have two selectmen positions for three years, one treasurer for three years, one trustee of the trust fund, uh, I didn't know the treasurer was up. One trustee of the trust funds for three years, one cemetery trustee for three years. And for the public, I believe we will have a second cemetery trustee position that'll be open in case anybody's interested.
Whose terms are up on budget?
One person resigned.
Right.
Paul Reagan, the chair was up, and Walter Waring, his position was up.
Okay.
So, there are two budget committee members for three years, one budget committee member for two years.
That's to replace the resignation?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
And then three library trustees for three years, and then there's a school moderator for one year. Anybody who's interested from the public that might be listening, you do have to sign up with the town clerk, tax electors office. Again, we'd be happy to tell you how, how many meetings, if we know, library trustees, we might not know. But how many meetings you have to attend, we'd be happy to answer those questions, any questions that we can answer for you. But by five o'clock tomorrow, you have to come in and sign up. You, if you missed the deadline and you wanna run as write-in, you can certainly do that as well, but. So, we've also added deadline for submitting petition warrant articles, it's Tuesday, February fourth. I've explained a little bit about the petition warrant articles, and we have our form that we've created. We did this last year, and we just reused it again, so. It is the petition warrant article form, they can fill in the purpose of the petition, the warrant article, the purpose, the warrant article wording, and then they do have to print it because you need original signatures of twenty-five registered voters, so.
Question on that?
Yep.
I think we ran across one last year that they have to be worded, that certain wording may not pass muster legally?
I mean, I have a petition warrant article last year.
No, but you are correct.
Yes.
If you.
Who's going to have one?
So, if, if somebody has, does submit a petition warrant article and you're, we, the first thing that happens is they're checked to make sure that they're all twenty-five signatures or however, that they have at minimum twenty-five registered voters of the town of Bristol. The second part we do is we send it to the town's attorney to find, we cannot change the wording, we, but we do have to find out if it's worded appropriately, if it's legally binding, if it passes, and all of that information as well.
And I think, maybe my memory is faulty again, but if that piece hasn't happened before the expiration date, then it can't go on.
Right.
So, if they submit it the last day, and then we say it's not worded properly, legally, it's over, they can't.
They can't just change it, is my understanding.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
They do have to go back and have all of the people who signed on it resign if they change it, so.
So.
Are you anticipating so?
No, I'm sort of suggesting is get it in before the last day.
Yeah, so you're, the last day, definitely, you have to have it by five PM, but if you can get it, if you wanna get your petition warrant article in before, if you have one, please do so, because then we can make sure we review it and hopefully give you feedback in time for a change, so.
Thank you, no, there's no backroom meetings or any stupid stuff going on.
The, the bigger thing that I'll add to that is do your homework.
Yeah.
And have it worded properly, just because you wanna word this, you know, word it in a certain way or say a certain thing, and you think that that, if that passes at town meeting, then it's gonna be law, that's not the way the state works.
Yeah.
There are, there are legal ways of saying certain things, and there are things that are or are not binding at town meeting.
Right.
So, if you wanna put in a petition warrant article, do your homework.
The other thing I'd add to what Dawn said was, if you wanna do a petition warrant article, sometimes people don't understand that no matter what your wording is, it could be totally accurate. It isn't, it may not, it may only be advisory article in some instances, so, but. And we would let you know, we would let everybody know what we find, when we look at that, so.
I know, it, it bothers me greatly when somebody puts a petition warrant article in and it's not real, and it's not legal. It's like, they, they put the effort in, it bothers me that the.
And it won't matter.
And it won't matter, you know, I, I want people's input to be worthwhile.
Yeah, sure.
Going on, some of this is in the TA report too. But, public hearing for the budget, two thousand twenty-five proposed budget and warrant articles is Tuesday, February eleventh for the budget committee. They just, Tuesday night, they just decided they weren't gonna make any more adjustments to the budget. I think, I'm just going through now to make sure that those changes are in place. So, I did put a blurb up here so people are aware, and hopefully, I'll be able to put a draft warrant articles at least up. We've also talked to the budget committee because you, in the past, we've always had it the same day that your petition warrant articles, the public hearing, and they knew, we knew that you could have it a week later, and in that, we, when we set that schedule up at their request a week later, it's causing some issues, delays on the town report potentially. And obviously, we don't have the information ready for the public until rate, when we are posting the public hearing, so. We have posted the public hearing online.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll be on my sheet.
We posted the public hearing online, we posted it in the lobbies, outside, and we've also put it into the Daily Sun, so. And you want me to just finish this page, and then we'll go back to?
Yep.
Okay. We've added town elections, ballot voting, Tuesday, March eleventh. More information will be added there, because we were, we're gonna have to discuss, I'm sure, some things on it. But, once the filing period closes, then I will add who's running for office up here. The zoning amendments, the proposed zoning amendments are here, I explained about some information about what zoning amendments are. The ballot language just got approved, so I'll get that posted, and then go from there. Town elections is Saturday, March fifteenth, at nine AM at New Fine High School. And I put the blurb for Cade's YouTube thing. I know we don't have it, we won't have it yet, but I copied it from last year. I don't have any information on candidate's night, if the library's hosting one or not, but I will find that out, and then, other than that.
You said town, you said town, you said town elections, that's town meeting.
Yeah, they, they call it town elections still, so I can take that out if it, so I said, so this is town elections ballot voting, and this is town elections town meeting.
Oh, man, that's good.
So, that's why I did that, I can change it, if you want.
That's gonna confuse people, you know, that's what they call it, yeah.
So, I will say town elections ballot voting, and then change this to town meeting day, how's that? Okay, yep, I'll do that. Do you wanna see anything else on this page at this time? Obviously, things are gonna get added as we start to.
If. Do you have anything in there about a shuttle? We should put it in there, when that, when that gets resolved, that's on the list of questions.
Not yet. Um, yep. I have, I actually asked, talked with Rayman today, and you'll see it on the warrant articles when we go back to discuss them. It will be at historic town hall. They, and so I will get, I have Rayman coming in February twentieth to talk to the board about coverage and everything that is needed, but I can, but I can start putting stuff like that up, yeah.
Thanks. And another question? Did, did we not, last year or the year before, do a video on the proposed zoning ordinances?
Yes.
That could be, is anybody gonna do that?
We're trying, we're going to try to.
Okay.
Last year, I don't know if we ever did, I, I think that we, the schedule didn't work out, we know, I don't think we got one done. But, if, this document does explain, this page tells you exactly what articles are changing.
Yep.
And why, and they're, why they're changing, and it goes down all the way through. The only thing that looks like, oh, there's, yeah, so, these are those, these are the split zones that are being updated, so.
That will be, most people will be confused by that.
Yeah, we'll have that at town meeting, but it does get confusing, so. We did talk to the chairman of the planning board. One of the people who usually does the interview is gonna be gone for most of February, but I think we can work it out, so. And so, we'd like to make sure we get a video.
Yeah.
And then, I could talk to the board if there's warrant articles that you want to, there may be a warrant article, I have a suggestion on the fire. There may be a warrant article, I have a suggestion on the fire department one that we should interview Ben as well, so. So we, so we are going to start working on those.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to go back to warrant articles?
Yeah.
Acting chairs up.
Now I'm throwing it back to the chair. We, we went through the agenda except for the warrant articles.
Okay.
We waited, waited a few minutes.
Are we going to go back to the T A report, Esther?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's up to him.
And he has his way, we are.
Where would you like to start?
I, so I will point out, this is draft G.
Yeah, I got the.
I will point out, we are going to be at the Stark Town Hall, forty-first Summer Street. Rayma did talk with the school, and we are set for twenty twenty-six to have elections at the New Farm Regional High School. So this hopefully will be our last year at the old town hall, and we'll go from here. Article one is the officers, we'll skip down two through eight are the zoning amendments, and this language has been approved now, so I don't have to make any changes. If we go to article nine, I've highlighted the. I worked, I have to enter everything in the D R A portal. And my number in the D R A portal is coming up different than the number we have in the town, so I've highlighted, I need to verify those. You won't vote on that budget until, until after their.
Hear it?
Yeah, after their public hearing, you could vote on it, and then if they changed it, you'd have to re-vote on it. But, so I was going to bring that back, we could decide next week as we get closer. Because I don't think you need again in time for me to get this into the. Town report, so next week I'm, I'll bring that back. There's one other article when we get further down that also is not totally finalized, but I'll explain that to you.
So you do have an error on article nine, the error on the budget committee's total?
Yep. Oops, I have a, no, I, yeah, I have an extra six, that's a lot of numbers. Uh, six, six, six?
Ninety-six million.
Number of these.
Do not tell people that. I can hear it now.
It's a little bit of an increase.
Yeah, unless anyone thinks otherwise, I think we should wait until after the public hearing to do the actual vote.
So the public hearing is February eleventh, you may have to hold a special meeting for us to get this in the town report in time, just heads up, okay?
Yep, short meeting up there.
It would be a short meeting, I mean, oh, actually, if you're going to the public hearing, you could potentially do the vote right after.
Or do you want to just vote it, and if it changes, we hold a special meeting?
So, so you can't vote it tonight because I have to re-verify these numbers, but next week you have a meeting, so you can vote it next week.
That sounds good.
Okay, I'll fix that typo as well.
So we don't forget.
So if, do you want to vote on the ones tonight that you can, just so that it's out of the way and just leave the two, okay?
Might as well, like we're all here, it's early, we're all here.
So article ten is one that you can vote on, it's the contingency fund. It's twenty-five thousand dollars, and it would come from the unassigned fund balance, so.
I think what will, so if somebody would like to move the article, and then we'll discuss it and vote on it.
Yeah, make a motion to approve article ten in the draft warrant.
To recommend. Not approve.
To recommend.
Recommend.
Please don't say not recommend ever.
Article ten, but article ten. As drafted in the draft warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carol, second by Dawn, I think you had it?
I think I do.
Any discussion? All those in favor to recommend article ten?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and it's five zero.
It's maybe thirty you corrected me on that, but I'm just.
Article eleven would be no reason appropriate, twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to Patriotic Recreation and Spend, Special Events Expendable Trust Fund established in twenty twenty-one. This would be fireworks, parades.
Just fireworks.
Just fireworks.
It's just fireworks.
Jets and other activities during fireworks.
Gotcha, okay. Somebody want to move that?
You make a motion to move article, no.
To recommend.
Recommend, oh, I had it too, recommend article eleven as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Les, second by Scott. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of recommending article ten?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's five zero, recommend. Article twelve, capital reserve, total of four hundred thousand dollars, broken down, twenty-five thousand dollars in accrued wages, twenty-five thousand dollars in assessment rebuild. Hundred thousand dollars in fire equipment, one sixty, one hundred sixty thousand dollars in highway. Seventy thousand dollars in police, and twenty thousand dollars in town building maintenance. Somebody want to move it?
Make a motion to recommend article twelve on the one.
Second.
Third times a town.
Motion by Scott, second by Dawn, to recommend article twelve, any discussion on that? Nothing on you, Mr. C I P?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And again, five zero on that. Article thirteen, see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of obtaining and placing an emergency generator and corresponding components. At the public safety building with one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to come from a grant. Excuse me, this appropriation is contingent upon receipt of the grant, and if not received, the warrant article will be null and void.
Sorry.
We had this discussion today.
Sorry, Sean.
No amount of this article to be raised from taxation, and it shall not impact the town's tax rate.
I will make a motion to recommend article thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Dawn, second by Scott, to recommend article thirteen, any discussion on that?
Tell me to get up.
It's a fifteen, it's a fifteen-year term, you know.
I'm sorry, please second.
Just turn around, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of recommending article thirteen?
Aye.
Opposed? And five zero on article thirteen. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote and raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for. The purpose of hiring four full-time private firefighters. What's that?
Up to four.
Oh, up to four, okay. This amount includes the salary and benefits for six months. The amount of this article is not included in the operating budget under article nine.
That's misleading, but it has to be written.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of article fourteen. Draft warrant.
Put it in second?
I'm not seconding it, it wasn't stated right, it wasn't stated right, I'm not.
Carol, second by Dawn, to recommend article fifteen, any discussion on that?
Article fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen's our.
Fourteen, sorry.
It takes a while to catch up. We've been like this all night.
Okay, my, Scott's been holding that board over there.
My eyes are really dry.
Oh, it's dry in here, my throat's still. So, just for discussion's sake, can a brief synopsis, right, was this was to add coverage for the. The third ambulance?
Correct. No.
No, not.
No, so this is to ensure coverage for the second ambulance. The third, yeah, the third ambulance thing is basically, the third ambulance is going to be essentially a, a reserve, but it will always be available. Unless one of the other vehicles is down. So it's not to staff the third ambulance, but it's to ensure staffing of the second ambulance.
Due to an increase in calls and so on.
Call, exactly, and the idea is that the monies to cover these six positions are to be covered by. The E M S contract from the contract towns.
Which are.
Yes, which, which has been approved by the contract towns, very good point.
But I think, I think, I kind of agree with what you're thinking, that's what I thought. That because we're.
It's all tied together, we have to.
But as the contract with the town, we, we need.
The, the short of it is, we use, we, we basically sell.
Right.
You need, you need, it's a certain amount of money, and you get X amount of cover, X amount of calls. To have an ambulance service.
Yeah.
And we only used fifty-five, sixty percent of that, and we sold the other forty-five to fifty percent to the other towns.
Yeah.
But even then, we didn't use a hundred percent of it. But we're getting to the point now where we're using a hundred percent, so we need to add to it so that we can still make all the calls.
I get, I get that, I guess I thought that if, the cost of this was going to be covered by the contract with the other towns.
And they are, that's, that's the thing, the other, that extra that we're adding is for the contract towns.
It doesn't say that here, it probably can't be included in the wording of the article. But we need to make it really clear that this is covered in the contract, it's already been signed by the other town.
So this number will be offset by the revenue from the contract?
It's in the revenue, Carol, we looked at earlier.
Yeah, it's already in the revenue.
So yeah, you're right, you have to be clear.
For the six months.
So we were kind of in the same thought process.
But to, just to clarify that, that figure is not. The, the revenue doesn't necessarily cover that figure. From, it's not revenue from ambulance billing, it's contract revenue.
Yes.
Correct, got that.
I can show you.
For six months.
Yeah, okay.
If you look in the, back in the revenues again, we, uh, wait a minute. Um, ambulance member fees.
That's up two hundred and fifty thousand.
Where am I? Oh, we got, sorry.
We increased that, yeah.
So it was two, we budgeted two thirty-two, nine fifty-two for twenty twenty-four, we, and we are increasing it to four eighty-one, one twenty, which is what the contract towns will be.
So we just have to be clear when you start asking questions about this.
Essentially, what this is doing, this is adding one person per shift.
Yeah.
One of the questions that came up during the budget committee was what happens if the contract towns. Well, if, if the money is not appropriated, their town meeting, and there is a clause, I have checked with Ben, there is a clause, that if, if something happens at their town meeting. It's, it's not appropriated, then they, they are able to pull out. But it's, their meetings are before, one thing Ben's checking on is the S B two town. But their meeting, and he'll have all that information for the public hearing. But there isn't, their meetings are before we even intend to hire, so that's why the wording is up to four. Because we may not be, if some, if a town doesn't approve their contract, they've approved their contracts already, but if their town doesn't approve their budget for some reason. Then we could potentially not be able to hire four.
Yeah.
And that's a risk that we have.
And at the end of the day, we may not be able to hire any if.
Right.
That may be what, that's going to be the decision of the board to make.
So again, we have to be clear and say, oh, we want to have a third ambulance, it's not as simple as that.
Right.
The better, that's what people will hear.
We can have it, it won't be staffed.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of recommending article fourteen?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And again, it's five zero zero. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to establish a cemetery maintenance expendable trust fund. In the amount of two thousand twenty-five dollars, I'm just going to simplify this, the amount of the appropriation is to coincide with the amount received from the sale of two lots in twenty twenty-four. This cost item shall be funded from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised by taxation, which shall emit, impact, will shall not impact the town's tax rate. The town's cemetery trustees shall be named agents to expend from this fund.
Make a motion to recommend article fifteen in the warrant.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Carol, any discussion? All those in favor of recommending article fifteen?
Aye.
Okay, five zero zero on that. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing firearms for the police department.
I'd make a motion to recommend article sixteen, it can be included in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Les, second by Scott, to approve article sixteen, any discussion on that? Hearing done, all those in favor of article sixteen?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero zero on article sixteen. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to establish an energy products capital reserve fund under the provisions of R S A thirty-five seventy colon one, for the purpose of funding energy efficiency and renewable energy products. Outreach initiatives related to increasing energy efficiency and/or reducing energy costs and covering grant matches related to. Increasing energy efficiency and raise the appropriate, raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund.
I'll make a motion to recommend article seventeen, place it on the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Dawn, second by Les, to recommend article seventeen, discussion on article seventeen. Carol, you didn't even have to raise your hand.
Yep.
So, we have to be clear what this means to explain this to people. I'm not sure that I understand. The philosophy behind the words of increasing energy efficiency for the town, that can be taken in a number of ways in the future. We reduce energy efficiency regardless of what it costs us?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm not sure what this is saying, I guess it's. A more efficient use of energy could cost us more.
Yeah, just because, just because it's more efficient, it may cost you so much upfront that you end up spending more money rather than saving.
Right, exactly, you may not see a return on your investment.
Right, yeah, so it has to be, I mean, the safeguard there is that the select board are agents to expend.
Has to improve the projects anyway.
I, I, I believe the idea of this is that there's money available for grant matches.
Right.
That's part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm all for that, as long as, in the future, everybody remembers what this actually means. Did it, there is not, we just don't move forward to increase energy efficiency without considering what it's going to cost us. But again, it's projects that the select board will have to approve anyway.
Right.
So I won't say anything at town meeting, I promise.
No, you can say all you want at town meeting, I'm, I'm trying to decide now whether I want to vote to recommend it or not, I'm still on the fence.
So.
I can, I can, I can understand the purpose of it. I'm trying to, trying to figure out where the, where the immediate need or even the future need for the town is on this.
That's a fair point.
That's, that's, that's my personal thoughts on it.
I'm kind of there too, but then on the other hand, it's, it's ten thousand dollar money, but in the end, it's not, and the whole budget's.
Right.
It depends on how many times you say that.
Right. First time tonight.
Although I think I voted for this, I can, we've all sort of had this conversation already, approved, said let's move ahead with this, we've already had this conversation, and I did say okay at that point, so.
Well, the other piece of it is, we have these committees that were asking to do this, the work.
Yeah.
And come in with recommendations, but then we don't support them with any funding, which is what we did to E D C, so.
We're still putting a bunch together so we can.
We still have final say. Or somebody.
My only reservation is this makes it easier to chase shiny things.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there again, the select board is the regulating factor in it, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to amend this article. That the ten thousand dollars comes from the unreserved fund balance rather than taxation. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, just for discussion.
Discussion, well, first of all.
I know, ten thousand is not much, but it's still, you know, it goes, it's, we're spending a lot of money in a lot of other places.
Any discussion on the amendment?
And I'm not a hundred percent saying that we have to do that, I just wanted to throw it out there for the board to consider. No, you know, I'm, I'm not married to that, I just think that we should discuss it and decide where we want to take the money from.
What's the benefit, what's the benefit of that, or?
It doesn't raise taxes. And it, it doesn't, we're not raising taxes, this coming in, or, like I said, it's not, ten thousand is not much. But I probably feel a little bit better taking it from the unreserved balance.
Any discussion on the amendment?
I think it's okay. I think it's okay.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five zero zero in favor of the amendment. Any further discussion on the motion itself?
As amended.
Yeah, I guess we've, we've kind of, I think, like, yeah, no, no more.
All those in favor to recommend Article seventeen as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, five zero zero on that. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the purchase of, for the purpose of purchasing, installing and maintaining four new trees in Central Square.
Is that the total cost now?
Yep.
That includes a, a different.
There's a quote in your folder under number six also, um, that, so that's the three trees to replace the ones that are cut down, and then that would be the spruce Christmas tree also. The spruce Christmas tree is quite expensive.
So, I'll make, I'll make a motion to recommend Article eighteen.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carol, second by Scott, to recommend, I heard, Article number eighteen. Discussion.
Is, is the word installing weird?
I took it off air.
Are they planted or installed?
Planting instead of installing.
I know, it doesn't really matter, but it just seems like a weird word to me. Don't have to change it, but I'm, is that, is that strange?
I, who's that motion?
Is that?
Oh, they got trees?
And what's that, yeah?
What's that, yeah, what's, what's the proper word?
It doesn't really matter.
Okay, fine, leave it, leave it.
If they're using a mechanical device to install it.
That's true.
That's a good point. It's a really cool truck.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in, in favor of, of recommending Article eighteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero zero.
So you can't vote on the next one, but I do want you to see the, the wording so far. I talked to the DRA, and she kinda told me to go back and copy the wording from the original article.
Would you roll that down for the, for the occasion, thank you?
There you go. She told me to go back and copy the wording from the original article, theirs part, but to take up the things that don't make sense, or don't, don't apply anymore. So I did do that, and we, and she told me to use amend and modify, and then I could do it as one article. So the first part, I just wanna make sure I got the purpose right. The original purpose was promoting recycling through improved transportation operations, and we wanted to change it to promoting recycling through improvements and maintenance to transfer station operations, including equipment. Does that cover what you were? Dawn Milbrae.
Yes, that's, I was, I just wanted to read through to the end, I'm sorry, I read slow.
I'm sorry. No, you're fine.
Yeah, that, that covers the intent that I, that I was looking at.
Um, the second part was to, um, all recycling revenue from cardboard and aluminum that are received annually be deposited into said fund. And, um, the next lines are repeats of the article from two thousand fourteen. So if, I just wanna confirm that that works for you. Again, the Department of Revenue has, has gotta look at this wording, there may be a slight change, and, and that's why I didn't wanna bring it for your vote on, but I wanted to make sure this covered what you were talking about previously.
Yep.
So.
Go ahead.
Do we wanna add wording and to include any future recyclables, like such as coal?
You can't be open, you can't leave it open-ended like that, though, I don't know, they're gonna see that.
It's a future, you just have to add those things to.
Really just change.
Amend it.
Yeah, amend that.
All right, yeah.
So.
Just like we are now, yeah.
Are we saying that if we improve, if, if we have improvements that better maintenance of the transfer station, that that will promote recycling to the people of the town? That's what that's saying, does that make sense?
No.
That's what it's saying.
That's, it's saying that the money that is in this fund
Yeah.
can be used, right now, right now, it can only be used for improved and promoting recycling.
It says promoting recycling for improved transfer station operations.
Transportation operations, yeah.
Through.
Through, sorry.
Recycling through improved operations.
That's the old wording.
That's the old wording.
No, no, I, I get that, yes, I get that, no, 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 thank you.
So we wanna continue on that, but include equipment.
But do we wanna still promote recycling, is what Carol's asking?
Promoting recyc, it doesn't seem like improving the transfer station operations and equipment will promote recycling to the citizens. I guess, and I, I realize two thousand fourteen is a while ago, and that's, we're just changing the wording.
It was written that, it was written that way so that we could use it to do the improvements on the tran, that we did at the transfer station.
I, I get that, but it seems like it's, it's saying it completely backwards. I wanna promote recycling, so therefore I'm gonna improve the transfer station. It doesn't make sense to me, or am I?
Well, it's, so we can continue to make improvements.
And we can maintain that.
Or am I just thinking too hard?
So.
Or am I not thinking enough? Does that make any sense of what I said at all? Let's promote recycling, how are we gonna do that? Oh, we're gonna fix the transferization.
Yeah, I, I mean, the wording, the, the previous wording is.
Is.
Is what it is.
Is what it is, okay, and I didn't, I didn't know that, so I got nothing to say about that.
It's a lot harder to change the previous wording than to just add additional things on. This is, this is just adding on that it can be used also for maintenance and new equipment. So the original intent is.
I get it, I, I understand that, but I just don't like the way, it, it doesn't make sense to me the way it's written.
Where were you in twenty fourteen? Where were you in twenty fourteen, when we originally did this?
So the RSA that's mentioned in this by the, does say.
I was probably working overtime and never being home, or?
It is specific for recycling.
No, thirty-one ninety-five H?
Yeah, it's specific for recycling too, just wanted to point that out, so you knew that, okay?
Well, I, I, that's fine, I, let's leave it. You, you do understand what I'm saying, just say yes, and I'll feel better.
Yes.
Yes.
Completely.
Aye. We got.
And again, the wording may change if, after the, the Department of Revenue reviews it, isn't it?
I mean, someone could bring up an amendment at town meeting.
Yes. Yes, anyone, even somebody from the board could bring up an amendment.
It might, it might not be enforceable, but you can do it.
Yeah.
By option, it might be low still for making.
All right, let's move on to community events coordinator contract.
What we did.
I already did that.
Sorry, you missed that.
We don't need a presser contract?
We've, we've gone through the entire, we were at the TA.
We're gonna go back to T A's the best.
I, I don't, I don't screw around, I got three again.
Then we're even probably, we're practically through the TA, TA, I don't know, so.
Excellent, the only people that were screwing around tonight were the two.
Scott came in and cut things right.
The short timers were the ones screwing around.
Two more readings, oh, sorry.
So we're, we're back to TA report if you.
All right.
If you're so inclined.
Few more things.
What?
Oh.
She's got a few more things.
You have enough public.
One more.
Yeah, we have to go back.
Okay.
Sorry. We tried to say.
Kind of, I can't have thought we might be, so.
Yep.
Charles wants a really good.
Um, N L R A workshop.
Oh, they're yummy. Oh, so, I'm sorry.
N L R A workshop, the watershed workshop is scheduled for February tenth, and is designed for planning boards, select boards, conservation commissions, zoning boards, and emergency to connect with each other and with the resources N L R A has to offer. It is located at the Kiefer Town Hall, if anybody is interested. Um, the school district warrant, Rema has asked that the board sign the school district board to attest to the copy. I don't remember us doing this last year, but she could have come to you directly, um, but she's saying that the board needs to sign it, and it's the last page. Yeah, it's the, it's the school district's warrant, but you have to sign it on the back.
Well, I don't remember doing this before.
Me neither, but.
Maybe it's new.
But it is this weekend, so I, um.
Well, that, it's, that's this weekend, is it this weekend?
Uh, yeah, Saturday, uh, ten, Saturday ten o'clock is the delivery session at the school.
That should be interesting.
Always is.
I'll print a budget of twenty-six million.
But why we, we just like we're saying we received it?
It says that we signed, it says the last page.
Yeah.
The wording says that.
Says, given under our hands this date.
As attest to copy.
Just saying we received the card.
The true copy of the warrant.
Yep.
See, now we're gonna pay him so much money. So we're not like approving or anything like that?
I'm sorry.
Well, like we're voting to.
No.
Oh, but we didn't, didn't recommend or approve or.
It may, it's high key, we've seen it now.
Probably has to do with the fact that you collect the money.
Yeah.
We should be, we should be allowed to keep the collector's fee. We're doing all the work.
I will let you know, um, the school, for town meeting, the school is not charging us to use the.
Yeah, I know.
They, no, they did. We've, we've been charged last year to use the building.
Oh, really?
This year, we're not being charged, um, I just wanted to also remind, their school is not, they're not gonna do any hosting of food or babysitting, it hasn't been beneficial for them, so last year, they said it would be their last year. Yep. When we talk about, wait a minute, I thought I saw. Meetings, elections and meetings, we'll have to just decide what we, if we are concerned without having anything.
So we're not moving food to the. How is food not perfect?
They weren't staying, so hardly anything last year.
Was it for, was it for the benefit of one of the organizations?
Yeah.
It was not a benefit.
More the classes.
They ate a lot of food, not very much.
Brown bag lunch, people?
Lots of snacks.
All right, what's next?
Are you, are you good with that?
We still, we still looking at whether we.
I don't know, we all have to.
I. I'm not totally good with it, because we've never done this before, and I don't understand.
Have you, none, none of you have ever, do you remember ever doing that?
I don't remember signing it.
I don't.
At the school.
Yeah, don't understand why we're doing it.
We could do it next meeting, can we do it next meeting?
It'll be after.
Do they need it this afternoon?
Oh, right.
You could sign it on the.
I mean, given under our hands.
They, they giving it to the school.
What, what does given under our hands mean?
I don't know.
All right.
I can check through and see if I can answer to.
Yeah. I did write down January thirty, or thirty, David, January.
Yep.
There we go, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, everyone.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I was signing it on the mouse pad.
Uh, cell tower, um, T-Mobile has submitted an application to go on our tower, so this will bring us to A T and T, Verizon and T-Mobile, thought you guys would like that. If you wanna look at their application and plans, it is in your folder under TA report, discussion material.
So just to be clear for the public, it's the existing tower that you're adding?
The existing tower, yep.
It's not our tower at all.
No.
It's not owned by the town.
It's not owned by the town, it's owned by Blue Sky, um, and we, the Verizon's on there, A T and T's on there, and now T-Mobile will be, um, adding there. They just have to do a land use permit, or what will be called the certificate of zoning compliance in the future, the process, um, and they will be able to add to it. Um, they don't have to go through planning board or anything like that, even, um, because there's a rule that, um, they can add to existing towers, so.
But that, that, what's the application for that came to us, or to somebody else?
No, it was to, it went to.
Public utilities.
Land use department. So you, I just put it in there, I thought you went and looked at it.
Okay.
Um, next one is the parsonage. Yep.
The gift that keeps on giving.
Yep. Um, so the churches, uh, we had the deed drawn up, I have the check, and then, and, um, the church has raised a concern that they would like to see something in the deed that says that you will never build on that property.
So bill doesn't, you can't put in like a bath house or something?
I think we can probably clarify that. I think their concern is that you, if you bought, tore down the building, you could rebuild the building, and like, the intent from day one is not to do that.
Yeah.
Um, it defeats the purpose, um, but they want, want some protections in place on the deed.
That's very, that's very fair.
Um, so.
I think that's good.
There is in a, so there's two, there is an attorney, I don't know if I can figure which one it is.
I was gonna say, you, you can put covenants, I mean.
Yeah.
You can write whatever you want on covenant. Do we write in, have we write in a covenant that nothing over five hundred square feet? That way, if we wanted to put, you know, public toilet there, or some kind of, you know, small, small kiosk or whatever.
Information kiosk, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Move the info, yeah?
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, five hundred square feet sound like a reasonable amount.
Eleven hundred square feet.
No, it's.
I think it's too much.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think it's too much, I think it's reasonable.
Just worry.
Ten by twen, ten by twenty is two hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Two hundred, two fifty? I just threw it out there.
Yeah.
How do you would go with two fifty to three hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, make the next.
Do myself somewhere on. So.
If we want to go, I sold it three hundred.
The attorney's recommending that you change the purchase and sales, but I went back to her and said, um, I don't understand why we have to change the purchase and sales. If the board agrees to put something like this in the deed, can't we just do it? My, also, my suggestion was, as long as the church operates as a church, because we have that clause in there for parking. Because if they cease to operate as a church for a certain amount of time, then the agreement for the parking would all, would go away.
Right.
So.
Okay, yeah.
So, two, what did, what square footage did you end on?
We'll not build a, building over three hundred square feet.
And I can just explain to them that the intent is that we want to install a bathroom.
Or kiosk.
Or kiosk.
You know, something like that.
We don't wanna be restricted from that.
Right, but we're not gonna build a, a new fire station there.
That's gonna be a rumor now.
So new town office?
That's where my office is going.
Police addicts.
Look, the, the whole point of part of the concern. Part of the concern about leaving that building up and having it renovated and somebody make apartments is they didn't wanna have that kinda thing next door to them, where they couldn't control how it was gonna look and have, what kinds of vehicles would be parked there, and that's all very fair.
All right, what's next?
Yeah.
Um, I, the good, the good news is, the federal funding freeze was, was pulled back. Um, the, it heads up, if, it, so there was a federal funding freeze issued this week, it did affect us.
Allegedly.
Oh, the.
We lost, we were, we were frozen, and we wouldn't have been able to do the Central Street project, including C D B G and EPA in the order. The order's been rescinded currently, um, but they are reevaluating, is what we.
As it said this week.
Yeah, I just wanna give you a heads up that it, it could come back, and that's gonna be very painful. I've emailed Senator Shaheen's office, or what's her new name? I've emailed, um, Senator Shaheen, she's got a different last name now.
Really?
McKenna, McKenna?
Oh, no.
Um, I mean, should they, so I've gotten emails from Goodlander's office and, and from Shaheen's, um, office. They were asking for people to tell them exactly how it would affect them, let them know the Central Street project, how it would affect us. Um, and I gave them, um, notes that it was imminent failure on that building, so, um, the.
So yes, we, we, sorry.
Sorry.
We have to be careful with the wording there, because this is, a lot of that's a political conversation, obviously. They don't go along, they don't go along with that, so they want us to, they don't go along with that, so they want the towns to bolster up. Their disapproval of that.
Well, my, the wording isn't a lie or embellished, it is definitely imminent failure on the Central Street population, but I was very careful about it.
Thank you.
Um, 'cause it is one point five million, and we just can't do that project without it, so.
And that was she who funded it?
What?
That was Shaheen funding?
CDS funding that, um, and I think it was Shaheen. It, um, we were awarded it two years ago, three years ago?
The senators have.
So twenty, oh, twenty.
Yeah, senators have a certain amount of money.
Once you, you get awarded the CDS and then it goes to an agency, EPA is the agency, um, and so that's, and then we also received the money from CDVG. Both of those agencies were on the list, so, um, so just wait and see. We're gonna keep an eye on it and we're gonna hope nothing changes. It also may have affected our warrant article, but, um, fingers crossed, it's rescinded right now, um, on the grant for the.
Generator.
For the generator, yeah, so.
They just have to work through all that stuff down in D.C.
Okay. So Seventy Merrimack Street, we held an open house yesterday. Um, there we have currently three sealed bids that have been submitted. They have till tomorrow at noon. Um, there are approximately eight visitors who came to the site visits. So I will bring those, um, those to the select board meeting on February sixth. Um, the Freightliner bid, I'm thinking that we, that may need to be a non-public discussion, so I'll leave that, I'll skip that one. Um, I do, I had, I had to add, I, and I'm not done yet, so I'm not saying one more thing.
Okay.
Um.
You're down to the end of this list.
Yeah. So, um, Hub Six, I met with Hub sixty-six on Monday. They gave us an update. Um, they're gonna be, um, doing Bristol Hill Road. Sorry. Um, they're gonna be doing Bristol Hill Road, um, they were caught, it, they were contracted to do the county. Um, so Bristol Hill Road will go to Alexandria and tie, um, one of the things they asked is if we wanted to tie the fiber back to the town offices. Ben and I talked to them today, um, town offices or to, the, sorry, the Hemphill Tower by fiber back to what the town offices. Ben and I talked to them today. We have some things to look into before we say yes. Um, it does, it would add some extra redundancy, so, um, if, if we think it will be good, but we're trying to decide if it would be here or public safety. Cuz it would only have to come down, and if it can get into the conduit, then it, um, that would be perfect. Um, Hebron, Hebron to PSU, they're working on the county build, and then, um, they have the licensing, they're ready to go. Again, we haven't closed loop yet, but we should be closing the loop cuz they, um, they anticipate that they'll be beginning some of that construction in the next thirty days.
And none of that funding is federal funding that could be in jeopardy?
Uh, that's a great question. Well, right now, no, cuz the order's rescinded, but, yeah, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's all, that was all, yeah, definitely.
So would you.
No, I didn't.
Arpa funds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, I think, well, it's where, um, not all Arpa, ours were Arpa, but their funding was, um, broad, whatever the broadband initiative thing was. So they're. When the loop's done, there are going to be a few fibers for the town, and we'll find out more about how we can use those, um, when that comes. Um, they're anticipating to be finished by the end of summer potentially. Um, I've asked them to attend. They wanted to do a, a construction update in an article, and, and they haven't been to the board meeting for a while. Um, I think it should be at a board meeting. So I have them coming February twentieth at six P.M. Um, so, just so you know. It bounced back up on me. Breeze Line franchise, we received the draft franchise agreement, um, so they're moving forward with that. I checked with the town's attorney. Um, nothing special we need to be aware of. Um, we just need to review the draft Breeze Line. I've sent it to the Technology Review Committee. If you'd like to read it, it's, um, I'd be happy to share that with you. Um, the attorney will review it, um, and provide any suggestions or possible amendments. And then there will be a brief period of negotiation as to terms, and then the board will need to vote and approve it. Or prove or deny the, the franchise agreement. That's it, so. I've had somebody, and, um, they were supposed to leave their name and number, and I don't think they did because I've never received it from the town clerk's office. Um, they want the, to know what they need, what the, if the board would consider quarterly tax bill, billings. Um, I haven't spent some time on what we would have to do to do that, but I don't think that, we have not budgeted to do quarterly tax bills this year. Um, it would cost a lot more in mail, in mailing. We, and not, I don't know how it affects the mailing process, any of that. I, I wanted, before I did spend some time doing the research on it, I wanted to double check what the board's thoughts were. I think it's gonna be too late if, obviously it's too late if that's to go on the warrant.
Right.
Um, but if it doesn't have to go on the warrant and you can change it, what are your thoughts?
Is that our purview? Isn't it the tax collectors?
There's gotta be someone in RSA somewhere that says how the, how the town does it.
So I've got to do.
One I've never heard.
And, and some towns do you do the quarterly, um, tax payments, but again, that's four times, four different mailings now that you have, and we don't have four budgeted. It can be very, that's very expensive, the mailings.
So that would not just be a billing, but it would be a quarterly requirement for when you have to pay, right? I think a lot of people.
I think the first three would be estimates, probably, like our, so right now we do two, so the first one is an estimate.
But still, it's gonna say you have to pay this by.
Right.
This quarter.
Yep.
How would it affect us though, voluntarily? Would it be better for the town if the money was coming in, in full payments?
It might, might make cash flow a little bit better.
Yeah, that's true. Can people pay voluntarily half their bill prior?
They can.
They can at any time.
They can at any time.
Yeah, I mean, people, men just, if they wanna pay quarterly, they can.
Yeah, they pay, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm getting at.
So they already couldn't do that, that's what.
Yeah.
You can go give her ten thousand dollars and have it written on your bill for next year if you really want that.
Right.
Thank you.
If anybody listening would like to do that.
Yeah, the thing is.
Won't spend, I promise.
Yeah, the thing is, you have to, you sort of pay ahead in anticipation. You can't.
Right.
You can't get a, a tax bill and only pay half of it, then come and pay, then come and pay the other half, cuz you'd be.
Right, you'd have to pay ahead again.
Well, you could do that, it's just after seventy years of.
Right.
That's true. Do we charge interest if it's? If it's, yeah, some, if, say, you know, this year's tax bill and you pay, you pay it a month late, do we charge interest or?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's, um, I can't quote you the percent cuz it changed in the last.
Yeah, okay, so that, that would be tacked on while you, when you pay it.
And usually it's a couple days leeway, so if it's due July first, she gives maybe a week's leeway and then interest does.
And then interest after that, okay.
So no.
So no. I don't, I don't see why we would if it's gonna cost us more in mailing.
We, we definitely don't have it in the budget this, for twenty twenty-five right now, so.
Tell them, do you know how much is for the mailing?
You could talk to Rema about it, and then if she feels it's justified, then she can come to us.
Well, it's definitely gonna cause, it caused a lot more work.
Oh, yeah.
She's gonna choose as much work for her, so she's gonna be in favor of it.
Assessing too, though. Assessing's the one who has to calculate it all up and send the bills to her.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this may be not even worth considering.
Would it be, we could put something on the website that says that if you want to pay, agree that you wanna pay, you can pay up ahead as, as you wish.
Yeah.
Right.
Voluntarily.
So that just as a, a point of information.
So they have that option regardless?
Yeah, so that people know that they can if they want to.
Non-refundable.
Yeah, non-refundable.
Oh, right, yeah, they sell their property and then.
Or just decide they need their money back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point.
Can she do that legally?
Yeah, open up, open up a savings account.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it could be, you're better off that way.
Yeah, my, my first house, I didn't have to, you know, I put twenty percent down.
Should we run that by?
Every month I would escrow in my own savings account.
Right.
It is allowed, you just, I just don't know.
No, 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 to, to, to put the earmark on it, non-refundable.
Oh. I think you can do that.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's.
I think once you pay a bill, it's pretty clear it's not refundable.
Yeah, but.
Yeah. Oh, if you sell your house, that, that's part of.
It's a circumstance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any taxes that are, you've already paid.
Right.
Are prorated when you, when you pass papers on selling property. Yeah, don't worry about it.
Okay.
I, I, I don't see why, why we would do it.
Um, cemetery trustees has, um, I've received a resignation from one of the cemetery trustee members. Um, it's Cheryl Saisuski. Sorry, my computer's sticking. Um, so she said she needs to withdraw for the remainder of her term as cemetery trustees. She has to focus attention in reconsideration of her priorities for twenty twenty-five. Um, she said in the past years, she's learned much during her service as a trustee under the chair, Richard Laflambeau, and pleased to see the trustee role evolve into a fuller realization of its administrative and budgetary responsibilities. Appreciates having had this opportunity to work with the dedicated team in service to the citizens of Bristol, both past and present. Hopeful that after a period of internal focus, I will be in a better position to serve Bristol again in the future. So thank you for this opportunity to serve, I should miss Cheryl Saisuski. So we will have an open position in meeting with the cemetery trustee chair, um, tomorrow afternoon, but if you could accept your resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
And thank her for her service.
And thank her very much.
Motion by Don, second by Carol, to accept, accept the resignation of what?
Cheryl Saisuski.
Cheryl Saisuski, yeah, I'm also Saisuski, sorry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Do you want to use mine?
I was reading. Um, bottom of the list. So there were two encumbrances that we voted on at the end of December. Um, one of them, we voted on, um, um, so we voted on the H.P. Fairfield tailgate chute. Um, we thought, by a reporter of the department head, it was sixty-eight hundred dollars left. When we went to do the encumbrance, there's only four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents left. So we can't encumber the full sixty-eight hundred. Um, I think it probably would be good, actually. There's two. Um, so I think it would be good if I could get you to amend the encumbrance motion, um, because we can't encumber what we said we were going to encumber.
Okay, how, word this.
I know. Amend the encumbrance for?
Alright, um, I make a motion to amend the encumbrance of sixty-eight hundred dollars from account oh-one forty-three eleven six fifty-five to the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents.
Second.
Less.
So.
Motion by Don, second by Les, to.
Amend the.
Amen, amend the encumbrance.
Encumbrance, yeah, of the H.P. Fairfield tailgate chute.
There you go. Alright.
Made on twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so how do we pay for it now?
I'm gonna, I have to go back.
We need to find, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars somewhere.
It's, it's gonna come out of either, it's gonna have to come out of this year's budget.
We know it's gonna.
Or we just don't, it's.
Yeah, right. Um, and then.
All those are favorites.
Alright.
Aye, aye.
Um, the second one, when we went to do master plan resilience planning, um, we had a motion to encumber four thousand dollars. Um, they submitted another bill after this, so it's, um, only three thousand fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
So.
Why do we have to amend the?
Because you've.
You're not spending, but it just goes back to the general.
You can't encumber something that's not there. So if you, your motion was sixty-eight hundred, I can.
We can only encumber the lower amount.
Yep.
Okay, so which one is this?
It's.
Up here.
This one, yeah.
Four thousand? Alright, so I made a motion to amend the encumbrance made on twelve thirty-one twenty-four for master planning resilience planning from an amount of four thousand dollars to the amount of three thousand dollars, three thousand fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Account, get a level.
Uh, sorry, and account zero-one, zero-one dash forty-one ninety-one dash seven thirty.
So, second, a second then. Motion by Don, second by somebody, Carol. Carol. To amend that encumbrance, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Um, the last one was you, this actually isn't in, it is in air, but it isn't in air. Um, the warrant article for the parsonage project, you encumbered the funds, we did award the demo, I forgot to tell you about that. We awarded the demolition, um, cost, but we also want, um, contracted to do the trees. The, um, we also are contracting to take care of the, the tree.
Tree maintenance.
So, um, I need to amend the motion to cut for the full warrant article, so we did the motion for sixty-five thousand. So I need the six, seven, five, two, eight, and that will cover the, what we talked about doing. We didn't, I don't, we didn't actually say that at that meeting, so.
Because we have the contract for the trees.
Yes, yep.
We can encumber the full amount.
Yep.
Alright, once again, I make a motion to amend the encumbrance dated twelve thirty-one twenty-four for Warren Article, Article demolition project, for count one, okay? From sixty-five thousand to sixty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
I'll say. Motion by Don, second by Scott, to amend the amount for the, uh.
Parsonage.
Parsonage demolition and associated tree work.
I do have this.
Any discussion? Do you wanna tell us about?
Yes.
The award?
So, um, we did receive three quotes, um, for, um, for the project, um, the, based on the guidance that you gave me, um, the one quote is, um, that ended up being awarded was Morrison Construction, um, at sixty-five thousand for the demolition, and then the balance was to take care of the tree during the demolition project, so. Spear Brothers was, um, was, uh, only for the demolition, and then the second part of Spear Brothers was the work on the driveway, and the two, two of those together far exceeded sixty-five thousand, far exceeded our warrant article. Um, and then, um, the always wrecking came in, but not at the number that we had discussed. It came, it came in a, it came in higher. Um, so that's why we stayed with Morrison, sorry.
Very good. What's in the contract for them to assure protection of the tree? Something happens to it, it's a done deal, you can't, you can't go backwards.
Well, they, they're trying to protect it during the demolition, so, um, they're gonna treat it. You were, what, remind me exact wording when we talked to them about it. They're gonna treat it, they wanna, um, prune it now, um, because there's some dead branches, and then they wanna protect the root system during the demolition.
The root base is the biggest concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we wanna try to salvage that tree, we wanna keep the tree, obviously, so the thought, uh, that was the thought was we would use them to. So the thought, uh, that was the thought was we would use them to.
Could easily impact the health of the tree during demolition excavation.
What happens if they do, I guess is my question. What's our recourse? Nothing?
Well, hopefully they're going to work with the.
Tree company.
Tree company.
Okay.
That's the intention.
I don't, I don't think you can guarantee anything with that.
No. Something could inadvertently happen, obviously, out of their control.
It's not with everybody wanting to guarantee things, is it?
Yeah.
You brought it up, not me.
I don't know if we voted on it.
No.
Uh, yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Great.
Okay.
One more thing.
Is that it?
Nope.
All right.
I'm checking on my little notes.
Select board items, Don.
Um, the, uh, NLRA thing actually made me think of something. I don't know if it would be them or us that would contact the state. And I don't know if New Hampshire does a low-salt area on their roads. But the amount of salt that they put on West Shore Road is.
Obnoxious.
Yes, that, that is actually the word that I was thinking. And I would like to see it.
The amount that our state uses in general is obnoxious.
Yeah, just, I mean, to protect the lake as much as we can.
So I think, um, I think that's something you should throw to the Conservation Commission as a suggestion. We've had some, during the groundwater quality study process, we've had some conversations about the high chlorates coming out of Black Brook. And like I said, Upper Birch is salted pretty heavily through that corner. It tends to go along that corner, maybe because they slowed down on that corner, I don't know why, but. So I think it's, and, but seeing on Facebook, people say, sure, you want me to drive into the lake and die, right? I mean, something like, of that nature, so I think it's.
It's conservation.
Put some of that on. Conservation Commission might take this.
But, I mean, following.
I think that's all, it'd also be a good idea, uh, just something to evaluate with our own highway department in the off-season. You know, uh, as far as our salt usage is concerned, not only 'cause of, uh, for the environmental impact, but also for the cost of salt versus.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think our guys do a pretty good job of it. They sand most of their.
And when I say re- reevaluate, I, I, I just say it's something to look introspectively as a town, not as a criticism for what.
Yeah, it's, it's, even, even when you're doing stuff well, you should keep a check on it to make sure you.
Yeah, like, uh, does a road like Upper Birch Drive need salt on it? Probably not. Bristol Hill, different story.
Certain areas need more than others, yeah.
But we're not gonna send two trucks out there, so.
Yeah.
Well, and that's part of the problem is, you know, you can't have both on one truck. So one truck's carrying salt, another truck's carrying sand.
We could buy a truck that does both.
Yeah, we could.
A chute, we could get a new chute that does both ways.
Yeah. Need a big mixer on it. But, yeah, following the plow out, there was, there was no snow on the road, the plow was down, they were doing ten miles an hour and throwing an obnoxious amount of salt out behind the truck, I'm thinking. Yeah, this isn't good for, it's just not good for the lake.
No. It's not good for people's vehicles either.
Well, yeah, I mean, overall, it's just, it was crazy. I wasn't sure where, you know, we should start.
Well, you see low-salt use areas around the state, so somebody must, there must be.
Must be a draw, so, yeah, okay, I'll have to go to a conservation.
I mean, I think that around any water supplies, you always see low salt.
I don't even know if the state carries sand at this point, not their trucks.
Probably not. Yeah, that was just a thought.
Carol, it's a good thought. Um, I thought it was kinda cool when I looked at the agenda tonight. At the top it says Bristol Flagboard Meeting at the Barbara Green with Town.
I was just noticing that earlier.
That was kinda cool, yeah. Um, uh, when I first came on, I was whining about the smoking ordinance and said I would do something about it in two and a half years. So I will, I would volunteer to work on a change to the smoking ordinance after I leave office, if that's okay. Um, and similarly with the idling signs that are on the side of the road. DES idling signs about don't idle your vehicle, there's some out by the on-town roads, out by the elementary school. Uh, I think there's one at the transfer station, don't idle your vehicles. I don't think we need to have those up, that's just my opinion.
It was voted on by passports to do that. Um, we put them up at the old, at the old building, they were up there too.
Yep, I think that they should come down personally, so consider that for the future. Um, did we ever talk about bike path repairs? We, we mentioned this a while ago, and it's kind of fallen off the table.
Briefly, but we definitely need to.
Yeah.
Start looking at that.
Four years.
Put that on a list of things to think about.
I've been, I mentioned it my entire term last time.
Well, so you have another.
It's not on my list.
All right, it can happen.
Do, that, it just occurred to me, when are we supposed to review the release of sealed minutes from our public session? Are we supposed to do that annually now?
Yeah, we do, we do, and we do it before you leave the board, so I'll put, um, I, thank you for reminding me.
Okay.
Um, but we usually do that before you leave the board. So we'll probably would do it maybe your March meeting, your, your last March meeting.
Yeah.
I remember standing at elections and doing it. So, here, or you stand around doing it.
Um, and you, you and I have had this conversation, Christina, um, about how our land use people, uh, may be tracking potential violations? And are they, are they looking for work when they shouldn't be? They may not be, we've had, I've had some complaints, i.e. I doubt, uh, going out to find out if someone has a violation even though there hasn't been a complaint. Um, and to add to that, if one of our officers is out and sees something that's not related to what they're doing, do we have a policy on how they report that and what we do with it after?
Can I, um, can I answer those? The two, first part, we, we aren't pursuing things specifically, but if we see something, we have to act on it. As far as, if we saw something on Facebook.
Yeah.
I have Scott send me stuff, um, not that often. But, so every so often, we, we do act on it if we, if we see it. Um, the second question, can you clarify what you mean as in officers? Are you talking about police officers?
If anyone, no, any, any town agent goes out and sees, uh, uh, what they think is a violation of what they're not there for, we are, we are reporting that back, that's okay, is that true?
Yes. So if some, um, we've had.
Some people have a problem with that, is my point.
If, if you go out, so to be fair and consistent, if you see something, you can't close your eyes to it.
Right.
Um, and our fire department tells us things as well. If they go out to a property and they feel that there's a concern, they've brought it to our attention before, and the same with the police department. Um, are we going, and, and we do go out and look at every, um, certain sections of the town. Um, I don't know if it's quarterly, but we do go out and review to make sure that we're not missing something as well. Um, it's not so much a drum-up work, but we just, you don't want to tell one person that they have to do a deck permit and the neighbor didn't do a deck permit. And now you've got a problem there because you're not being consistent, so.
Well, the.
That's just my take, but I.
I understand, the two people that I have spoken to have concerns that we're out trying to find violations without having had any reason to do so.
There, there is a, uh, another side to that.
Yeah.
Get your permits.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, not at all.
I started it, and I will let you know that when I was in the assessing land use department, we did go out and we, we did go out and review the work that someone had done. We did go out and review different areas of the town, because you don't always get out to the town. And so we did go out and, when we had staff. But we did go out and try to do those things, um, to make sure that we were being fair and consistent across the board, so.
Okay, and one more? So as a board, we agreed that the land use folks could do after-the-fact enforcement. Like, you didn't get your permit, so now we're gonna send you a letter. Um, would it be a better idea to contact people first before sending them an assygram? Talk to people, give them a phone call first before we send them a, a nasty letter, a, a, an enforcement letter?
I don't think those letters are nasty.
Um, that's why I just changed what I said, but that's what people think they are, if you know what I mean. The perception of.
If you get your permit.
If you get a permit, you won't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
When Carol brought this up to me before, when we talked, I did talk a little bit with Joanne about it, because I do think there is a point there. Um, when, if it's a first-time offense, um, could there be some leeway there? But then I kept thinking about it more, the whole reason we put the after-the-fact in is because it was, people were doing it on purpose, not getting a permit and saying, oh, I'm not gonna pay any extra when I come in, when they catch me. If not everybody, let me, I would say, general terms, that's what was happening. There was no penalty to you not following through and getting your permit, and that's, so.
And I know, the case that you and I talked about, I, I completely agree, because the person said, we've got to the point in our project now where it's time to go get a permit, I'm like, no.
No.
No, 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 if, if you already knew what was gonna require, you should have got it first. But are we, should we maybe pick up the phone and say, call people first? We're a small community, I haven't.
Well, we don't have phone numbers either, that's the other thing for some people.
Yeah, the, the days of looking somebody's phone number up on the book and giving them a call.
No, I, I, I got that, I guess I'm just trying to be.
The other.
No, don't, don't, I'm not trying to.
No, no, I, 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 I get all the.
I get what you're saying, but I also.
I've worked there, I've done that, I've done enforcement stuff, exactly that.
I, I also, you know, I go, go along with what Scott said about, I mean, I haven't seen the letters personally, but I don't think they're nasty.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it might frustrate somebody that they're getting a letter, but it might frustrate them that they're getting a phone call too.
Yeah.
To be fair.
Can I, I would also add, and I don't remember if I talked to you about this, Carol. Um, I also talked to Joanne about, we do send, so we send a welcome postcard to all new property owners when we did deed transfer, welcome, um, to the town of Bristol. I don't know exact wording, but it says, welcome to the town of Bristol. Please note if you're doing, planning on doing any work, the permits are required for these things. We also send an annual contractor letter, so they keep a list of contractors. Um, and every contractor gets one every year, reminding them if you're doing work in Bristol that you check in, you mean your permit.
Yeah.
Um, the particular incident that we're talking about, that person did get a contractor letter. And the homeowner did get a by, a letter, a postcard, 'cause we keep track of who it goes to. And if we have a new contractor that comes in, they add it to the list and then they'll get a letter the next year. Um, trying to be proactive and trying to also, you know, not, we, yes, the after-the-fact permit was put in place to, to have a penalty.
Yeah.
But do we want that to be our, our only, our first step? No, we'd rather work with you and we'd rather get you a permit upfront, make sure that your project is following the rules, but.
No, and I haven't, there's, there's no excuse for the situation we're talking about, they should have come in for a permit ahead of time.
The other way they acted when they got here.
Uh, another topic, but yes, uh, yeah, and, and, yes.
And, and I did reach out to the parties and I've not gotten a response, so. And offered to meet with them both, so, you know, but.
Plus?
Okay.
I did have, oh, so Budget Committee met on Tuesday. Um, we did put back into the budget some money. And it was, and it, it was great. Because Walter has really been concerned about the, the, uh, late, late region visiting nurses and Pemmy Baker, that, the cuts that we've done and that Nana used to be a thirty-three four and we, we, the, the services for our seniors, not just our seniors, but people coming out of the hospital and something. So, um, there was lengthy discussion. And we agreed between the two services to go back to the thirty-three four hundred amount. But we did not split it equally, we upped the one for Lake's region, um, probably.
Twenty-five something, it, so the whole budget for agencies was thirty-three four now. Um, but it was twenty-five something for Lake's region and eight thousand fifty for, um, thank you.
Right, but, so we fulfilled the request for the Pemmy one and upped the, the amount given, not the requested amount, but helped it. And Walter was extremely grateful that he's advocated hard for that.
I think it's a good idea.
And he feels it's, it was good to be able to.
While you're on the budget, um, I, so the board knows your number is slightly different than, um, when I had to prepare for choosing next meeting, I had to, I went back and compared the October budget that you submitted to the Budget Committee. And the number was off. So I had to go through every single line to find out why the number was off and fixed it. It was four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and it was something that I did during the Budget Committee. So I take full responsibility for that and they know. So we fixed it, matched back the numbers, and then Jeff's numbers, the two budgets have to match. Um, so I had to add in a ninety-something thousand dollar item for transfer to reserve funds um, to offset his revenues, um, sewer, and it was a hundred and four thousand approximately in water. So it does increase that bottom line, but it doesn't change the other lines in the general, the general government. It's just water and sewer, it increased both in select board and Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee voted and put that in as well, so.
Scott? Um, Planning Board met last week. I don't have any else on the paper.
Oh, I, did I? Oh, I did attend from home, yes, and you should make sure you mute yourself. I started yelling at my dog, don't start, and I'm like. I'm like, I'm so sorry, it's like.
There was nothing ma- there was nothing major at, uh.
It was a public hearing on your zoning, uh, split zoning.
Yeah, split zoning.
And that went to ballot, so, um.
Because. Finally.
Well, that's only one part, but.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, you do, so, so just so you're aware, we do have a full planning board and one alternate who has been attending.
Nice.
But has, I think he's only been seated once.
Scott.
Yeah.
So depending on the outcome of the elections, um, the chief, you would, one person will have to leave the board, so.
Yeah.
Rob, can I stick one more in here? When you heard that, Joe? And, oh, actually, you passed one to Sean too.
Love to.
We were in, I, we were in Wyoming last week, my wife and I, and I grabbed a, a tax bill. And I love the way that they break out more of the information on the left of what your taxes are. Are we able to do that, or is our form?
I didn't see it.
Is our?
Oh, no.
Is our form designed by the state?
No, our form is defi- does, was about, designed by Gem Forms in Maine.
I mean, now you, you could make that list a hundred items long, you could put the whole budget in there, but.
Oh, it's funny, they have a BOSI's too.
Yeah. A mil in, in their, in their.
Holy crap.
In Wyoming's language, a mil is a dollar per thousand.
Right.
So that's seventy dollars and fifty cents per thousand. But if you look up the total that says valuation in that corner, your, your valuation is, by law, is nine point five percent of the fair market value.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's crazy, why would you use ten percent of?
I know, that's so, wow.
Why not make it seven dollars and make it the full amount? It's, it's all, it's just math, it's sort of silly.
And it's cap, the, the fair market value, that's capped at four, that can't change by more than four percent per year.
So it's not fair market value?
Well, it's not, but I, that's, well, I'm trying to understand everything she told me, you know?
Yeah.
And the, the cool thing is, as I told these guys, this is really not relevant to the meeting, but you may not live, the city, uh, the town boundaries don't necessarily touch each other. So you could live in the county and not live in a city. Therefore, that first line comes off your taxes, if you don't live in the city.
You don't, no?
Yeah. But anyway, we could consider putting, putting a few things on, on our bill.
But, but our bill is split by.
Four.
Town, state.
Yeah, we did put the town, states, local school, county on it, yeah.
Just a thought.
We do break down, if it's current use, current use is on there, credit, exactions and credits are on there. So building and land is split.
Yeah.
Um, but features for, if you have something extra, it, it's shoved into your building, so. But features, if you have something extra, it's shoved into your building, so...
I'm done.
Correct.
You need a motion to go into non-public?
You know, that's what I want to say something to you.
I said you were late.
Two meetings left, she must have cut off public talk.
Oh, Sean, that's...
Couple, what, is there a plan for the old fire call boxes?
Uh, you just reminded me of what I was gonna bring up. Not a specific plan, why?
I'm just curious if, you know, if they're just sort of, they're there, they're covered.
Oh, as far as removing them?
Yeah, or preserving, or...
That would require most likely me going and taking them down.
Raffling them on...
I wanna put my name in for one.
You checked with the...
I necessarily speak for the chief, but they will be, the disposal of them will be handled as we would the disposal of any other town property, whether it be sale, whatever.
Auction.
Auction.
You know, it's, it's just too bad that they're, you know, they're covered with black plastic, which is fine, but it doesn't look great on the buildings. It'd be nice if they're all painted fresh and renewed, but then people would think they're functional and we don't want that.
They need to be removed, the buildings in town that have them on. So the buildings in town that have them on that are not town buildings, those are the property of those building owners.
Interesting.
And they do, they're, so they do hold some value. So there's some newer boxes in Central Square that were installed in the past ten years that are probably worth somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars used. So, because they're master boxes and they're fully functional. Those things newer, almost ten thousand dollars now. So, yeah, it's a discussion I'm gonna have with the chief. Technically, the system is now defunct, but it's still operable right now because of eighty-five Lake Street. Because it's monitoring eighty-five Lake, it's tied into that. Which I could jump it out on the loop, but it's been the middle of winter and they haven't been ambitious enough to go twenty-five feet up on top of old Blue Zone.
Is there any historical value to any of them that the Historical Society might think we could save on?
Yeah, and that's another discussion I need to have on, because not only are there those boxes, there's also a transmitter that was in the old radio room that we need to find a place for. So one of, like, one of the things I'd like to do eventually is set up a functioning mini-system as kind of like a display thing, whether it be the Public Safety Building or the Historical Society or whatever. I just, it's one of those things that I'm not, I definitely don't have time to do right now.
Put the siren right in there and let it roar.
But you, I could very well, that is actually, you go down there and throw the switch, and it'll work. I'm gonna do it one more time before you...
That was it, when I was on, you couldn't join the department unless you were within hearing range.
So, so that kind of brings up what I was gonna, did you have anything else?
There's one other, there's, you had discussed a couple of my questions, but there's a non-functioning fire hydrant by OSEA.
Yes, for a while. It was an insurance claim, it took our, I wanted to get the insurance money. I can check with Jeff and find out if they're waiting on parks or not.
Why would we have to wait for insurance by your...
Because somebody hit it.
Right, I understand.
There was a claim and we couldn't do anything with the hydrant until they agreed. Usually Primex was...
Repair a hydrant without...
Doesn't make sense.
That makes zero sense, because that hydrant has to be repaired, whether insurance covers it or not.
I know, Primex wouldn't let us do anything to it until we got the third-party insurance.
Primex isn't responsible for the fire protection of this town either, so...
Primex is our insurance carrier, so we have to follow what they say. So the time they said...
Should be replaced immediately.
I OSEA it.
So I can check with... Believe that it was ordered, I just don't know if they have it or not in-house yet, so...
I say, let's tell them to do it.
If we're talking hydrants, the hydrant by Frosty's at the corner on West Shore Road has been out of service for almost a year now. Why is that one not fixed either? That was something I...
Oh, it was fixed and then got hit back during the paving by one of the paving companies. We have three that have been hit this year. So the paving company has paid for the damage on Frosty's one, if I'm not mixing it up. But I will double-check with Jeff, I'm actually going to their meeting tomorrow and see what the status is on what it's...
Yeah, whatever the case may be, those, that needs to move forward, because Primex is not the governing body at this level. It may be your insurance carrier, but those items need to get fixed.
I can't imagine why they make us wait for evidence, I mean, I don't know, but it makes no sense.
There is a dispute on, by the third-party carrier at the time, about where it was hit, so...
It doesn't matter who, whether a private covers it or a private carrier. Even if neither one of them, they both refuse to cover it, it still needs to be repaired, so...
Right, absolutely.
So we'll have a little reimbursement, yeah, so...
I'm good.
So somebody's watching about your question.
Did you see what you found out of frustration or just drop?
So that, so I, you may have already discussed the survey in the meeting, and I apologize for being late. The sale of the building, where are we with that?
We should be posting it beginning of next week. Ben, between Ben's schedule and my schedule, we weren't able to set a date for the open house, and now we picked that date. We're gonna have two open houses, one during the week and one on the weekend. Ben's gonna cover the one during the week and I'm gonna cover the one on the weekend. And we will be posting all of that hopefully by Monday.
Did you have anybody at Merrimack Street today?
I had eight people stop, so I personally, eight people stopped by during the open house. There was a family stopped by. Yeah, we estimated about eight. We split the shifts, so I, one, two, three department heads that went down and covered along with me, so...
Can we help you do this open house for the week? Are you doing it on a Saturday, it seems?
I have to, I was, there's two dates that we're looking at. We're trying to get it all done in February. So we should have posted though by Monday. Last, real quick, all committees' meetings are starting back up again. I just got confirmation, we're gonna start it in March, the second Monday in March. So I'll send invitations up, but it'll be every quarter. It'll go back to quarterly meetings and it'll be the second Monday of that month.
Second, so second Monday in March?
Yes, I'll send invitations out, so...
Withdrawn, I mean. Motion to go on...
Motion to go not into non-public under ninety-one A three, two, A, B, and Z.
Sorry. Motion by Dawn, second by Scott, to win a non-public session.
Thanks, Sean.
All is in favor.
Thank you for finding us.
Carol, aye.
Dawn, aye. Carol, aye. Wes, Rob, aye. Scott, aye. Sean, aye.